Everybody can go back to church and not pray for us, as they say we're taking the legal money, be praying for us. So that at least we get the legal. Yeah, that was it. So be praying for us. Yeah, why they post it, we're taking the legal, be praying for us. So thank you very much, I'll go to chair in this situation only.
Thank you, uh, thank you, thank you distinguished gentleman from Toshana County. Listening to you very well. Giving the significance of this discussion. And for us as the people deputy, first function government to rightly activate. That we listen and understand what is unfolding. Because church is the world, relative to the world of current.
Inquiry chair.
Inquiry.
Uh, my inquiry goes to the fact that based on this is the. But the unlawful change of them from plebals or in the streets. There are or there should be two parties when the United Methodist Church. So do we have the other party represented here? Because if we are to delve into the matter and then talk about famine solution, you do hear from the other side.
Inquiry sustained and uh.
Yeah, I, to my distinguished police, I, like both of us share the number one, number two, the number two of Nima County. The reason why I being a common investigator, the reason why I thought it was important that we should am writing the two parties was to give us a clear cut honestly from the UMC family and the Labor Council of Judges. Then from there, while we're here, and then we now have the second party to come in. And I think we can now compare and contrast them at which time the speaker will be here. The test speaker will be there, I do, that's the reason why, that was the wisdom behind my congregation. But like we usually, you know, say in our meeting, you know, plan area or leadership have a, they, they, they will. So as per your information or your inquiry, the level of the flow, if whatsoever decision you made by the total provider, clearly the one I proved the confusion in that manner, in by the UMC and the Labor Council of Judges, to give the question, if I'm able to get it, I'll put it.
So, so in flight, so giving the importance of this certain matter, especially concerning the church. To all of us, for our, look forward to. Think it's important to understand, as the first question, government, what is actually unfolding at the time. Heard clearly from the communication from the bishop, uh, clearly. What seemed to be the problem from your perspective? That we will now give the floor to ST Navi to help us understand what is unfolding. What, what?
There are two, okay, help me, two groups here.
Okay, one?
One from the United Methodist Church.
Okay.
And one from the Council of Churches.
Okay, so, so, so I will, so, so we're listening to the United Methodist Church. Because my understanding and from the communication, the issue is within the United Methodist Church. So we will listen to the United Methodist.
Are you?
Goodbye.
Yeah, inquiry.
Inquiry, yeah, inquiry.
Are we allotted in time? Can you be with Ron down? The bar of Mr. Central, are we allotted in time for the Methodist Church or the Council of Churches?
Okay, so, uh, giving, uh, Martin taking the floor now and the court to the discussion. We will allow ten minutes for the question.
So, so.
Yeah, I want to tell me the way.
So, so.
Ten minutes. Ten minutes.
Gentleman from Sanokano is protected.
Thank you so much. And so I'm just trying to, you know, lay down some rules. The ten minutes that I've got here. Within that ten minutes, what the designated spokesperson has made his presentation. Anybody from the Methodist group can watch this.
Within the ten minutes.
Yeah, within the ten minutes.
Mister Frisari, uh, distinguished, no, I'm speaking to the Frisari, right? Distinguished, distinguished gentleman from San. I think we need to let the Frisari go ahead. If there is a need for anybody to speak.
So ten minutes subject to extension before the.
So, so I think the, we, we, we got a full understanding here. That for the very first round, we will allow ten minutes. And within that ten minutes, the parties can, you know, give the floor to another person just within that. With that, let, uh, listen to distinguished, uh, witness, uh, from the United Methodist Church. To help us understand what is unfolding, what is, what is crisis, what is going on.
You want pastor?
Arrow, arrow, yeah.
You want pastor, you have, you have seen?
Yeah, please, please let, let's protect, let's protect. Uh, distinguished honorable gentleman. I want to thank you all for inviting the United Methodist Church for this conversation. Um, the, the bishop, as the letter clearly stated, would have loved to be here with you all. It's heard that this is an opportunity for the church to tell a story. I think before us is an issue seriously of misinformation. And those of us who have gone through this business of the legislature, legislative life. You know, the kind of stories that can even determine whether you get elected or not. It may be a totally full false story. Here is a country in which we are. We all know that this country. The law, our practices, our everything says defines marriage. So if somebody goes around and say that a church, which is older than the Republic of Liberia. It is out of this church, the church has produced more presidents, more legislators, more senators, and members of the house than any other, any other, uh, religious organization. You never heard one day that in this over two hundred and ten years, that there was men and men getting married or women getting married. You hear on the street, you even hear that at seventy second, the people getting married, the bishop there. Those of you who have gone through lies, the first thing you will say, ah, what has happened? Let me go and check before you invite the church. But they are, this thing has never happened anywhere. There is no truth to it. The bishop has stated very clearly in his letter to you and in many publications. My colleague will point some of them out, but yes, because I agree with you, it's very annoying. And gave a bad word to our country, not only the Methodist Church. Something that is not happening, you talk about it, and people talk about it, your whole Bible in their hands. So I'm sure our, our colleagues from the, from the Council of Churches. They've been following this matter as well. I can tell you, unless somebody can tell me, that in our work as legislators, in any of our districts. We have been, you can, we gave, if we have any information that this thing is happening. Then we will know whether it is true, anything is true about what is going on or not. It's false, it's absolute false. A meeting is held in the United States of the Methodist Church. That decision for over twenty something, I mean fifty, somewhere years, people have been discussing about, um, you know, making gays and to, to become pledged men. In one of these meetings, they're thinking, but the position of the African churches, they, 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 Latin American churches and others was that that cannot happen consistent with our laws. I mean, it is inconsistent with our national laws, inconsistent with our culture. So the agreement that came from there was go to your countries, go to your regions, your regions. Because we say African region, Latin American regions, so they call it regionalization. Go there and whatever your law says, that's what you practice. We have come back, they came from the conference, we have all the documents for you. All, for the leadership will give you, will give you a copy each for, for what we have here. You know, but let me, let me finish with the.
Chief clerk office please take, uh, deliver a case and pass it over to members.
Yes, please. So, sir, this is what I know. This is the type, everything else that you have seen, all the other fight is not doctrinal, because it's not true. It's not a debate over whether or not one church want to marry, uh, a man to man. The other fight you see, whether it's in Ganta, whether you see S E is above the property. Of Bruton, after they declare that they do not want to be members of the United Methodist Church. After they decide they don't want to be, then they say they want the property. Some of the property two hundred years old, hundred years old. This group was founded February this year. Then they say they want this property. This matter belongs to the court. All the churches that have experienced people breaking away, what have they done? Sir, from the AD Church, which is our original church. Eh, Winka came from there, Bishop Winka, he pockets there. He say he want people to carry their body in a church, you have people to follow him. He left and started building his churches. He didn't come to AD Church where people and say, I mean, because I pay offering here, because I was a member before, my man were here before, so therefore you'll give us more the property, cannot have churches work. So this is so important that a bishop, if you look at the quality of people on this delegation. The bishop say, we all should come. And that's why we came, because you gave ten minutes, we're going to go into certain details. But as you ask questions, we really would like for you to ask questions, the thing that you believe, that you know. And not, because it's also bad for us to put in the public view, the public, a statement that, you know, you're you're promoting same-sex marriage, how you come to that? You know, those, those type of terminologies are not very nice for the public here. So that's why God made all of us to come there, I mean, how bishop made all of us to come. So you can ask any question and my colleagues here, men and women, are prepared to answer any question you have on this matter. Thank you.
Observe Bishop, uh, Mister Frisari.
Yeah, observe Bishop.
By legislative parties are observed, uh. This, uh, hearing is very crucial. So I would refer that at this juncture, we can have the sergeant and aunt, please put the witnesses on board. So the information that will be gathered here will be the truth and nothing for the truth, as per our legislative.
Observe Bishop sustain. Sergeant Aram, may you kindly help us to administer. Okay, yeah, observe Bishop.
Yeah, so, thanks for what's there. I understand that they take from UMC and brought some documents.
Who are they?
Yeah, so as I was saying, uh, my observation is, I understand people, our witnesses have brought some documents. Having these documents with them while we go through the, the presentation until we can start looking at it. I don't think is the right thing. And we still have those documents in our possession. And by the time those presentations are over, I need to have some fair knowledge of the other documents.
Yeah.
Observe Bishop for the district gentleman from Nima County is sustained, chief clerk, uh, there's a sergeant, please take, deliver those communication and distribute them. Yeah, all the, all the matter. Okay, all the matter relating to, uh, having our witnesses on board, uh, the guidance, uh, from the chief clerk. We will, uh, have this conversation in most, uh, on heart of us, right? So we will, the flag, uh, is in, like in the. So we will proceed, uh, with the, the presentation. The one of time, the very first gentleman who has presented, you still have some minutes, if somebody has some more clarity to provide. Any additional remark, you can go ahead, before we can take the next.
No, this is making people. Take down your.
So anybody else from the, the United Methodist Church who want to provide additional information onto why the specific cases in Libo, as the, the author of this communications, who that to, what is unfolding?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, someone who specifics, who love you. ST Navi, what is really happening there, why churches are closed, why people are fighting, and that's the reality. Yes.
Honorable Frisari, members of Yakobu, including, uh, YLCC, members of our team. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to add my voice to our spokesperson. Honorable Senator, for the deliberations regarding the possible of our church. Again, my name is Javasin Boy Knight. I'm the program director of the Peace with Justice Program, which has to do with human rights. Uh, but what is what he said, there is nowhere, you know, we talk about this, this is the constitutional, uh, framework of our church. That has to do with policy and other laws that govern our church. There is no way creating that the United Methodist Church has sanction or approval for men, men to get married or women, women to get married. There is nowhere. Um, regarding what is, regarding what is happening, uh, our, right after the general conference, you know, every four years, you gather in the US or anywhere that is destiny or designated for us to gather and local policies, document or other policies regarding our nomination. And after every four years, that is done. And for the last fifty-two years, we learned, there have been issues about same-sex marriage and all the different things, where people have been advocating, especially in the US. In the United States, that hey, they want men, men to marry, they want women, women to marry, for the church to endorse that for fifty-two years plus. That have been the fight, and we, especially from Africa, have been defending the issue of marriage consistent with the Holy Bible from time to time, until last year, like what the senator said in the US, twenty twenty-four. From April to May the third, April twenty, I think it was the twenty eighth to the twelfth May, when we had that general conference for the first time. And that whole thing came out about the definition of marriage. And delegation from Africa stood against it and said, no, we don't think marriage, the first definition I came in the book, in the social principles, sorry. Because I know most of you don't, you are not aware, was, oh, the issue of marriage should be a lifelong relationship between two consenting adults. So delegates from Africa said, no, we need to be clear, because in Africa, we believe in the Holy Scripture. And we believe in our laws, civil and other statutory laws, that define marriage as between one man, one woman. So we went together and the different, uh, delegates came up with a profound definition of marriage that says that marriage is a lifelong union or relationship between two, between a man and a woman or two consenting adults. And the two consenting adults stem from the perspective of the African background, especially when it comes to marriage, statutorily. Marriage, the age of marriage here, it is eighteen above, we know the custom of marriage, marriage law, fifteen, sixteen years, but statutorily. So that's why you saw other people raising the issue, considering other because of the issue with youth, sexual, early marriages and what have you. And destroying our young girls, that's why it was instructed. So in other context, like you have been all over places, America, the few that, oh, this is what they are running with. Now, when that happened, we came back to Africa, before we came back, our bishop went on national radio and had a press conference informing the world in Africa, including all the African bishops, they had separate press conferences and issuing statements that the United Methodist Church across Africa does not in any way endorse homosexuality, same-sex marriage. We stand on biblical principles, as, uh, the definition implies in the book, in the Bible and our law, that it is between one man, one woman. And that's men, men or women, women. And then he came back on June seventh, it's in your document, he issued another statement. And clarifying further that we in Liberia would not conduct same-sex marriage and would define marriage as a relationship between one man, one woman. And that was clear, and the African Council of Bishops also did the same. Recently, the Council of Bishops of the United Methodist Church, all the, of bishops around the world, for the over ten million members of our church. Issued a statement that nobody should be coerced, nobody should be forced to practice or to, or no revin, or clarity should be forced to conduct same-sex marriage anywhere. Like against the law, like against the faith and what have you, it was clear. So for our brothers and sisters to.
Hold on, uh, hold on, yes, uh, gentleman from Lofa.
Is that inquiry? Inquiry.
Is that inquiry? Okay.
To the issue of inquiry is pointed to the issue of consenting, consenting adult. We'll just go back, because when you say a marriage is between two consenting adults, between a man and a woman. That is too big and ambiguous, right? It can be defined the way you want to define in Africa. I live in the States, if I'm in the States, I could define it as men and men. Would that be right? So, so, once they are both, they have, they have reached the age of, I mean, to the age of consent, right? Now, in Africa, in Lofa, I can't from Lofa all of this, right? If we have a sixty-year-old girl, a fifteen-year-old, a seventeen-year-old girl deciding to get married, custom marriage. Meaning that phrase without it being well-defined and detailed will be understood by either of them to do whatever consent is. My question to you, uh, my inquiry here is, would it help us all if you have defined it in detail to avoid ambiguity before it is? Because I clearly heard, um, 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 Olango boys, one Olango boy is on the. Put asterisk to this definition that you have in your book of doctrine or the social philosophy in some way. And, and myself got confused a little bit here when you were trying to expatiate, right, from your, my understanding, that's why I raised, you know, part of my hand. To see how you can come back there, to explain to the audience, or elasticize.
Inquiry, inquiry sustained, uh, the, the real question, and I'm adding to you too, is, uh, did I hear you say the definition of marriage that in your book, from this most recent convention, that you did, you adopted a definition to say it is the marriage between a man and a woman or two consenting, did I hear you say that?
Also, when we are talking about, do we have here, do we have? Yeah, do we have?
Uh, is that inquiry also?
Inquiry, inquiry.
Okay, go ahead, our floor move, yeah, we're coming, uh, we're coming, we're coming quick. Yeah. I mean, just mind, I would, in order for us to control our responses. Yeah. We're asking to can direct all inquiries to, to the chair of the delegation. Suggestions? And to the speaker.
I heard that there was a previous conference that defined marriage to be between two consenting adults, I mean adults. Are you listening to me?
Yes, I'm listening.
And you disagree with that definition? And you keep to, to, to do your own definition, and then you said between a man and a woman or two consenting. So af- after you are disagreed with the earlier definition that marriage should be between two consenting adults. Then you come back and say between a man and a woman or two consenting. So I want to know how, how you disagree earlier on that definition and then come back and then modify it, but to bring the same phrase back.
The first person who asked the question.
Are you, are you answering?
Mister Frisari.
Yeah, yeah, I, I come in open, please, uh, Bishop, please, please have your seat, please.
Mister Frisari. Uh, to honor the conductors, I think we gave, uh, the UMC ten minutes today. If the ten minutes is exhausted, I think we can allocate time for questioning. Because, uh, I think they are still on their ten-minute presentation and all the inquiries coming in, so it will make us was part of the.
In a, in a wisdom of the chair, uh, any explanation that is a little and big, or let us need clarity or properly understand context, I think is appropriate. And so, uh.
A paragraph, paragraph one says it to D.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so let me get, did you concede, did you, you, did you do? Okay, please, uh, introduce yourself and then, uh.
I'm running killer. Uh, the chairperson on crisis management in the United Methodist Church. Uh, the honorable representative from Lofa, Lofa asked, uh, it had been more clearer. And I say, well, in that moment of time, when they wrote it, we ourselves, uh, were looking for clarity. And because we are looking for clarity in it, the council of, the council of bishops went back on the drawing board. And wrote, uh, a decision fifteen, sixteen. That, and that is in your file also, that tells us that every annual conference. Every central conference, every region has the right to make the amendment in their book of discipline. That will be used in their region. And, uh, what is in, uh, the overall, it can be, uh. Rewriting in your region book of discipline to suit your context, your laws, your culture and everything. Uh, you got it in your book of discipline and it says here, uh. The decision does not negate the authority given central conferences in paragraph five, four, four point five. Central conference should have the authority to set standards and policies for rice ceremonies of the solemnization of marriage. Taking into consideration their laws, the laws of their country or countries within their jurisdiction. The central conference may delegate the same authority to each annual conference within their borders. And because of that, the Liberian Annual Conference in their last setting gave us our definition in Liberia. In the Liberian Annual Conference for same-sex marriage. And it is also in your, in, 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 in your document, in your file, that is the, it, it.
What's a Liberian definition? What's a Liberian definition?
They, they have, they said Peshwa. Peshwa, Peshwa. Yeah, and the notarized document on.
So, so colleagues, this is a notarized document, we have it.
Page two. Count, count three. In, in that line, with its traditional stand and in line with the adherence to biblical standard, scripture, the Holy Bible. The laws and customs of Liberia, the Liberian Annual Conference will not conduct, say, weddings of homosexuals. Or ordination for self-avoid practicing homosexual. The United Methodist Church is traditional in its interpretation of the Holy Spirit, I mean, Holy Scripture. The scripture that contains both the Old and New Testament and will continue its evangelical, evangelist. Evangelistic outreach to all persons who live in darkness and know the redemptive grace of our Lord Jesus Christ. Um, there, we said, we will not, we do not condone it, in fact, more than that. We've been to five different annual conferences and all of our resolution, ninety-eight point nine percent of the Liberian Annual Conference voted against same-sex marriage. Uh, we've always voted on it.
Let me, let you all know that the Liberian context starts with Liberian constitution and Liberian law. Okay, so, nobody, not even a church. No, wait a minute, let me finish, I'm calling inquiries. Not even a church can register and make a go to preach without a law, which is Liberian law, you can say whoever you are. So the Liberian law on marriage is clear, it also needs to be clear. That the mistaken notion that churches are the people marrying people is false. Marriage is between, is a contract between a man, a woman licensed by the Republic. When you get a paper before you go to the church and then there is ceremony, that is a ceremony. So for somebody to believe that a church that has been here for two hundred years, that this church suddenly started to marry men and men. And you have not been able to show one example, no example. Let, let's take another inquiry from the distinguished chairman from Lofa. Yeah, yeah, the distinguished chairman from Lofa has a clue.
Thank you very much, again, you know, we. Again, again, I hear from.
The issue is an emotive issue.
Senator, I hear from local county and where I come from, we want to get a real good understanding so that the people can know what is going on as well. Uh, I'd like to ask one question, then I, I do a follow-up, that has to do with, when did this whole issue, this polar value start? When did it start?
Well, if you are a Bible-reading person, you know that it's issue of, I mean, of sexuality. From the founding, from the original thing of life, it's from creation. It has been an issue, the favorite churches, but you know that in Liberia, there has been no time.
Senator, it's in the Methodist Church.
So the question is, we feel, we feel the Liberian Annual Conference, eh? Why, why did the whole province come out to the extent that you have a division now, where is that?
But what I'm saying, it has been a debate.
No, it may have been a debate, but I may pronounce that what we are.
It's when they after this conference, wait.
So what, what year, what, what year did this start?
You need to know, and we don't want to go into. No, no, it, no, it's, it's totally irrelevant, all right. You know, if you, you first say the issue of, of, of what our law say. Uh, uh, Senator, Senator, the question that is asked to you so that we manage the time, Senator, the question that is asked to you directly is, uh. The controversy that is now in the public. Yes. Liberian churches in the land are closed, esté number, now and people all over, when, when it start? Well, please, yes, please Bishop. Yeah, yeah. So, so, yeah, come, yeah, yeah, who's taking the floor? Yeah, yeah, Bishop, why?
My, my brother, let, let's, let a man from Lofa.
Understand each other.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Bishop, take the floor, please.
I'm not a Bishop, actually, I'm, I am a leading member of the United Methodist Church.
Okay.
And thank you very much for the invitation because we feel that this would be an opportunity, a water platform to explain what the issue is. The United Methodist Church had a general conference lifted a ban on same-sex marriage.
It shall, when?
Last, forty-three, yeah, before last. Forty-three, yeah, forty-three, so.
You said men is on the floor, I'm not sure.
So like, like, thank you. The United Methodist Church, yeah, please. The United Methodist Church lifted a ban on same-sex marriage.
Yeah.
Following more than fifty-two years of debates at the general conference level. The issue was very contentious, very unpopular. In the midst of the discussion, one of the largest conservative bloc of the United Methodist Church. The North Georgia Conferences, the South Carolina Conferences, and all of these evangelicals broke away. And left the liberals to be in majority at the general conference level. And then many churches started breaking away and so the United Methodist Church decided to up for a recommendation that has continuously come from Africa. So that United Methodist churches do not leave the United Methodist Church only because another group is liberal. And that policy became the regionalization. It was first presented to the general conference by our own Bishop Wano. When it was presented, it was rejected and I think this Bishop Wano was termed as a racist. But then Bishop Kula came and took the regionalization and he said, you know, it is important for us to preach the gospel within our biblical understanding based on our region. We should preach the Bible based on our culture and we should preach the Bible based on maybe our national laws. But we see that the Western world is becoming too liberal.
Chairman, order. Yeah, yeah. I think the same time, when it should be to the point, because the question is directed.
When did it start?
When, when there's a polar within the Methodist Church like Liberia, when, when did it start?
So the question is derived, I would suggest, the, the, the question is straightforward. All of you, the base will know the contribution you should make ever. When is this decision a definition?
Especially the, the, the confusion within.
So that all we need is a twenty twenty-four, after your confession, twenty twenty-three, after your confession.
After the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Book of Discipline was published.
Thank you, thank you.
So let me, no, no, my, my question, let me recognize, uh, our, our. Honorable, honorable, honorable.
Our chair, that question was intended for a follow-up question, so when you break it, then you break the follow-up.
Yeah, yeah, the follow-up, yeah, the follow-up is honorable, honorable chair. Again, you know, like I said, from Lofa, if we are reading these things, we want a very good picture. If you go to the, to the notarized document here, this was notarized February twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
So, do you have any explanation in between there, when it started and then coming back to this clarification that you are having there, notarized of recent? Any? That's the question.
The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Book of Discipline, that lifted a ban on same-sex marriage. Also gave a caveat law to empower every central conference and annual conference. To adopt the rules that will fit the original context. Following the adaptation of the rule that defines our national context, the document was passed into resolution and notified. And, and notarized, that is why, yes, all right, this has been a banger.
Then, then have the distinguished gentle lady then come follow us, uh.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, thank you so much. Uh, so, uh, Chair, distinguished colleagues, uh, from my observation, I think, uh. What our distinguished guest is trying to do is to confuse us. If there is, if there is, if there's, something is not there, you wouldn't say, don't do this, if you want to do it, don't do it, if you want to do it, do it. I'm looking at the Book of Discipline twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. Paragraph, uh, three forty-one, point one, point three, sorry. Freedom of clergy to perform same-sex marriage based on conscience, not issues of the Bible. If same-sex marriage was not, you know, had not been performed, you wouldn't say you got an option to do it or not to do it. So let's establish that fact that it is there and so you are given an option, don't do it if you don't want to do it, it is there. What is the essence, then you come to the notarized version that says here, uh. The Liberian Annual Conference are maintaining the name United Methodist Church. And now we see the confusion that is happening, you got one such, one group of people that are saying this is global and global will perform same-sex marriage. And then you come and say, no, this is United Methodist Church. And so why is it that you all, you got some other churches that meaning global, that bringing all the confrontation and another one saying United Methodist, they are bringing all the confrontation? So from my understanding, the ones that are carrying the name global have agreed to perform same-sex marriage, which is not part of the law. Which is not part of this country, so why is it, why is it so, why is it that, that we have two different sections of the United Methodist Church? And then one section is saying we're performing same-sex marriage, the other one saying, and if you cannot say. The, the laws of the, of the, of the Latin, the sisters, the teachers, the marriage are between a woman and a man. A woman for eighteen years, a male twenty-one years, but now you are saying, all men are, are, are two consenting adults. Why would that so, if two of me agree, they consent to marriage, so you got a right to marriage, I think there's some confusion here, they're trying to confuse.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Presale. You see, it is clear, according to their discipline. That what they have is clear that same-sex marriage is within the Methodist Church. But since the Liberian culture and the Liberian law don't support that, they are not going to do it. Since the law and culture in Western countries support that, they will do it. Or all is the same, United Methodist Church. Now, when one of the pastors, my question coming to you. One of the pastor who is a homosexual, who hired his wife as the first gentleman. Comes to Liberia on evangelistic mission. Now, he's not going to get married, he's not going to get married. He got married in America or whatsoever, you know, part of the world that supports same-sex marriage. But he's coming to evangelizing in Liberia. We'll call, we'll recognize you when the members.
When we ask our questions, let them recognize that and respond, yeah?
In the Methodist Church, so the pastor and the first gentleman, and they have come. To evangelize at the Methodist Church, they agree, Estro Nawi, or First Church. And he mounts the pulpit and begin to introduce his entourage and recognizes his wife, the first gentleman. My question to you, what would you do? Because he's from different backgrounds of the country that support, which is fall, falling apart. But he's not conducting marriage in Liberia, so he's not going against the laws of Liberia.
Thank you.
But he's in a church and he introduces his wife, the first gentleman, what would be your reaction? Yeah, uh, uh, this is the second question, I look up to you, we're going to probably use it again, uh, let me, let me take, let me take.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for the recognition.
Take note of the question. Remedy, you all have to wait, the members are asking you, so please wait, remedy, please.
Hello, I think, I think the room, if the room is getting a little heated and I think because of the. And I think because of the feeling, you know, conflict we have, you will have this kind of environment. It will be very interacting. So I'm getting to understand, listening to the Senator, that assuming you go to the United States of America and sign probably a convention or treaty, right? There are processes. Signing of the treaty doesn't mean officially that it's applicable in your country. It has to be rectified, you got to accede to it, and you got to domesticate it. The domestication is basically to align that treaty with your local laws. So listening to the Senator, it means exactly that's what you are telling us. It is clear that in the United Methodist Church globally, same-sex marriage is allowed. But there is information that based upon the document you gave us that you need to domesticate it based on your local laws. Saying the laws of Liberia, the domestic relation law, the constitution, and other laws, several procedural laws does not allow same-sex marriage. It means that Liberia has not exceeded to it. If that is clear. Now, there is a conflict, especially with the Estorunamwe Church. We see, we see our people worshiping on the street every Sunday. That is a disgrace to us as a country and it's very embarrassing. I listen to the reading of the bishop's letter and I see to some extent we are not addressing the root causes of these issues. We've been political, we using other means to shukaku and we not address this situation. But we need to be strict to the issue that my brother can say, start Santa Claus. Let's be direct to the issue. Today is Monday. Sunday will be here in few days. Our people will be there in the street again. The following Sunday, they will be in the street again. What can the U M C tell us about the situation at Estorunamwe Church? And how can we mitigate this issue? For our people to have this very decent, normal and regular kind of form of worship that we are accustomed to as a country? I would want the U M C to actually explain that to us and let find solutions to the matter. Because it's very embarrassing to us as a country and not as a church. The same Bible tells us that when the priests, the priests and the, the, the leaders and the people, what are taught together, you have a country that is blessed, it becomes blessing to other country. But when we see the church being divided to this extent, it means that we are treading in a wrong path. And this is a disservice to us as a country before to rely on a church for direction both spiritually and morally. So I want this, I want this representation of the bishop, I wish the bishop himself was here so that we can address this issue and see how can we resolve this situation as Estorunamwe Church. If we even have members of the Estorunamwe Church represented here, I need them to also speak to the issue.
Uh, yes. So, so a third question, y'all hold on. When we get to y'all, we'll leave y'all straight and go to the Council of Churches. Let me give you opportunity to my colleagues and thought they have inquiry. Let me recognize, uh, Yar Flobo, followed by Oromasi, and then of course.
Honorable Presiding, distinguished members, our witnesses. I just want an inquiry that will point out probably where, I mean, some issues that hasn't been addressed. From the Estorunamwe Church, uh, from our witness in the Methodist Church, there is a framework document called the Book of Discipline. What I want to know whether you have a group of Book of Discipline and a Liberian-specific Book of Discipline.
Are they singing?
Hmm? Yes, so I'm, I'm coming, I'm coming there. And if, if, if varies, because, because what I'm saying is at the global level, marriage are defined.
Mia Mia is taking place there.
Yeah. Marriage was defined. Marriage was defined as a relationship between two consenting adults. Then I also heard it was modified at the Liberian level to be defined at.
Now, take one question, get it, oh, today.
With now, oh. It, it, it was defined at the Liberian level or at the regional level here as a relation between a man and a woman or two consenting adults.
Good question.
You understand?
Yeah.
Based on what you said first and the second definition, it makes me to believe that there is another Book of Discipline that is specific to Liberia, for Liberia. And if so, if so, why didn't you define marriage as per your resolution? Because the conflict started, the noise are there, the resolution is just this year. The conflict started last year. And it's a conflict that prompted the resolution. Now, if the resolution, if the conflict, for example, had been on the definition of marriage that other people are disagreeing with, instead of going to the resolution, why wouldn't you just define or redefine marriage in that Book of Discipline to, to get us away from where we are?
That's where I'm, I'm, I'm coming.
Thank you. Uh, Honorable Massey. So we got four questions and please take key note of them. Because when you have the floor, you explain everything and then we'll go to the Council of Churches on their stance on this. Yeah, Honorable Massey.
Yeah, so thank you very much, Mr. Presiding, and to our witnesses. Uh, my question is also in the same direction of the distinguished gentleman from River City. He asked to, to, to say, okay, what if a distinguished reverend or bishop whoever that is coming from a region according to your definition or your regionalization? Why if somebody is coming from a motherland to, to, to come to administer the gospel here? You going to accept, you are not answer whether you will accept the pressing in the Methodist Church in Liberia that you are not auto, that according to the notarized document that you are not accepting? Will you, my follow-up question to you is, will you subject the, the region or your natural delegation when you are going for your annual conference in the United States where the same-sex is, is being authorized in the church? Will you accept your bishops or your dedication to be honor the authority of the other bishops who are already practicing same-sex in the other region?
Thank you. Uh, uh, Anthony, and then I'll come to the General Jury, then we'll close this section. And then we'll give you opportunity to, uh, the U M C to, to respond, then Council of Churches come in. Yeah, boy.
Hi, Honorable President. Uh, Father, thank you very much. And I want to say thanks to the, instead of bishop, are you there? I think, yeah, I think. Okay, I count it, thank you. Thank you very much. I think like, if we use this presentation, all of us here, we are looking for solution in the United Methodist Church. But I think sincerity would be the hallmark of the entire conversation. If we don't be sincere to one another, your entire church will not settle. The issue of same-sex marriage, it was clear that the bed has been lifted. Now, the reason why the global guys are arguing that you don't want it at all and the U M C stay arguing that you're always saying be operating is because you're circulating pastors. You're circulating pastors. Because if Anthony Wole, some people, I'm a pastor of the United Methodist Church and I practice me a little bit strict, Mia Mia business or for fellow business. And then in the United Methodist Church, we can circulate pastors. And then I come to visit you in Ngukutan in your church. Are you telling me, you tell me say, Anthony Wole? Stay outside of the United Methodist Church? When we are all member of the United Methodist Church? You can't do it to me. You can't. Because you already agree, even though you say you're not practicing both, one of your member is coming when you get to really be in Ngukutan.
Then they get a man.
They get a man. What message are you sending? What message are you sending to your congregation? I want you to tell me, Chief.
Thank you. So, so, uh, let, let take the, the lady and then we'll close on the badge of question and then we'll listen to.
Thank you, Chair. So for me, I would just, I want to know in a nutshell.
Can, can I?
Book of Priscilla, Book of Estorunamwe. So I would like to know, um, why is it that marriage was defined in another context as, you know, um, in contradiction to the Latin, it says constitution of the country of Liberia? Even though you're not going to practice here, fully to you, you're not going to be practicing here, why did you allow it to be defined in another context other than the whole African question?
Good. So, uh, I mean, many of the questions that came out here was category know that first, members wanted to know whether you have a different hand book or what, how you call it, discipling book. You know, that is contextualized in local content like you. Two, a hypothetical situation is given. In fact, it substantiated that you have the rotational basis of your pastoral staff. And what will happen if one of your pastors entered the church with this? This, uh,
Yo, go sit down.
Be our seat, be our seat. So. Can I, who are they? Who are they? Well, who invited you? Then y'all get in seat. When I have seat. All right, y'all get in seat. Hold on. Will you invite the church? Colley, Colley, please, please. Hold up, Colley, please. All right. So, so since the church rotates pastoral staff, and if not, the church still, um, collaborate and work with your global partner. The key question is, a global partner that fully execute your, your global or your discipline book comes to your church, what will you do? Overall, I mean, that's the whole direction. Clarify the confusion still within the whole things that is going on. The specific, the specific. Um, the specific question that also Colley asked is, the next Sunday, equally denied. Uh, the, the, the specific question that is asked is, uh, members or other people are holding service outside. How do you intend to address that? Um, the current rate? So overall, they will go and clarify the confusion with the definition there. Still, what are, how are you doing? How all of these situations? So we give you the next five minutes to kindly address that and then we'll go to the Council of Churches. All right, y'all hold on. The first thing I want to establish is.
So information.
Okay, hold on, I need information.
Information. I'm coming in on a point of information because through my inquiry, I raised the issue whether or not the, the members of Estorunamwe Church was in it or not. And we just have few, few, few strategic members of the, of the Estorunamwe Church that's working. So I would have thought because the S D situation is very crucial. And it has taken center stage. It has taken center stage. So I would think if we can allow member of the S D to also speak and then they can address it realistically.
Wait, 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 information, wait, information. The information is sustained, but we will listen to. Mr. Presiding. Mr. Presiding, the, the guests are just walking. We will know them. Uh, and then after the Council of Churches or private council, which the Chair would determine how to sequence that. With that, uh, let here the U M C to address some of the key questions that were raised. Would it be appropriate for me to, would it be appropriate for me to make a point of order? As a guest? Yeah, would it be appropriate for me to make a point of order as a guest? Wait, as a guest. Where would I have a resolution? I saw the question. All right, I will raise the issue that the bishop of the Liberian Annual Conference was invited by this honorable body. And the bishop appointed a delegation representing on the basis of the bishop's appointment. We are here with the Liberian Council of Churches because we have prior information that we were coming here to have a discussion and a meeting. We were never informed that the parties. Let us data, let us data, I have a process and a procedure here invited. The decision lies with this party that will determine how to manage. Only opportunity will be to you now is please address members' questions. Do you have responses to the question?
Observation.
What is the observation?
Thank you. You know, we're talking church here. And in the church, they care for the church as pastors. I observed it as being that the money man is answering all the questions.
Our observation sustain. It's a money man, that gave, that addressed the real issue. No, I mean, I mean, it's a money man, that addressed the issue and please answer the question. Thank you. All right. One meeting, uh, Honorable gentleman from River City, one meeting, please. One meeting. One meeting, son. Yeah, yeah, please.
Yeah.
You can add, you can add, I press the chair. All right. So, uh, U M C, are you ready to answer the question? You still comparing notes? Okay, uh, let me, let me ask the Chief Clag. Why is it Chief Clag? Chief Clag, I saw, uh, a group of citizens walking in. Will you help me, were they part of, uh, party to be here today?
This is a presiding, we must, our guests, to answer that. I say no. They are not part, I mean, they were not invited here. When we walk in, I asked them, and they said they are from one of the churches and they are here to us there.
Okay. Uh, okay, so they are here to answer. Okay, they participate.
Not.
They were not invited, been removed.
Not, not, not invited.
So, uh, okay, so, Arrow, uh, I, may I do this? Since, uh, they are not party, they are here and we say not, they let this party, they not grant them or invite them in capacity as a server. Uh, we will kindly ask the sergeant to kindly talk to them and then please wait for us, uh, after this hearing. If they have a petition to submit and anything to submit to this body, we will listen to them. But at this point for this meeting, we will kindly ask them to kindly excuse us.
Sorry.
Incoherent, that's it. Hold on, hold on.
Like I said, from my communication to the speaker and subsequent that led us here. This situation within the UMC is very, very much important, and it is causing a shock in our country. This is a public hearing. And a public hearing, anyone has the right to appear, once they have an interest. Would not tell you say, oh, the public here, who are you here, the, the chair determines that.
Uh, Arul, uh, Ravi, uh, we can hold you, if you are in being a discussion. We know here in Agust, you have a veteran law because, alright? I mean, when we get in the church, we tell, we wish you will say that. And when you pull out in a bed, you hold it. In a house here, you have to see your, your school.
Yeah, so honorable Chair, thank you for the gamble. It is clear here that when a party is a back end. The gamble of the chair determine whether you go on a oath or you don't go on a oath, would not tell you go on a oath. So when you also come here, given the nature of the communication, it is determined by the body to go public or to go private. For this conversation. The way they have shocked our entire country, maybe the UMC could not feel in it, but for all the representative people, we are feeling it. So it is better to go public, that is the reason why we invited all of the journalists. So anybody from the United Methodist Church who want to come and listen, all of members are confused, they don't have the opportunity, today is the opportunity for them. I would create the indulgence of a gamble, that the brothers and sisters from the UMC, what are they from, Pinzay UMC? That have, no, I'm. That have interest. That have interest, you will go clear, you go low team. Once they have an interest, they are not participating, they just want to listen. By their listening, by their observance. After this conversation, we will get an alternative for them on the side, that certain point will lead us into a resolution of the entire UMC sector. That the motion that you are about to offer or the instruction you are about to give, I create the indulgence that the brothers should sit as a listener and observer and go through the issue meticulously, if I can be accepted, thank you.
The, the wisdom of the chair determine. They will stay in as a server and let's proceed. Let's, 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 this one, no more, uh, inquiry, uh, we want to give the opportunity to UMC to respond to the many inquiries, statements and clarity that is sought by members of this august body. Uh, we can only entertain your responses now, yes.
Dr. Presiding. We ask your indulgence for me to have a consultation with my delegate. No problem, you can.
Uh, my best, uh, two minutes.
Uh, 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 come on, let me tell this myself. Magathamas, Magathamas, Magathamas.